Ready, Jeanie?
Uh huh.
Okay, it's Thursday night, April 19. It's a couple of minutes after eight. This is the Shoreburn Zoning Border Appeals and the continued hearing for 59 North Main Street. And is there anyone here from 59 North Main Street who'd like to be heard?
Gabe and Peter Vines.
Amazing.
Okay.
Please, please proceed.
I think, yeah, well, Peter just updated you on what's happened since the last meeting. So we met with Conservation. Conservation Commission issued, actually closed the public area and has voted to issue an order of conditions approving the project based upon the plans that we had submitted to them. If you'll recall, our last revision was 41018. That was a Conservation and Board of Health, addressing both Conservation and Board of Health. Comments? Part of our Conservation presentation was what sort of plant material we were going to use in our replication area and buffer zone restorations. We decided we would go with, we would go with Goldenrod. We've got a lot of Goldenrod out there. We talked about how we would maintain those zones with a cutting program. So it's this area here, and actually you can see that we've banded that now, so it's a long swath that we're going to be able to maintain along our tree line to here. Then it's kind of open meadow through there, and we agreed to set seven granite markers so we would permanently have a place to say, "Resource area," that way.
Our maintenance area this way.
Yeah, maintenance, right. And then we also agreed that, you know, we'll go out in the field with the Commission, determine whether this area really, this is an area that's kind of natural, and it's got a good stand of Goldenrod. Not too many invasives yet. But that's one thing about invasives, is they're opportunistic, and they're out there in these other areas that are definitely thicker through here. So we definitely want to keep up with our moment program there, and we'll just have to adjust things in the field. We've got three years to do it. We also agreed to remove Bittersweet beyond those perfected areas as well. So I think we've got a good program. I'm kind of putting back what, you know, Mother was trying to do for herself and can't maintain in our area beyond what will be our fence, because pretty much our fence is going to go along this line. And so they've agreed with that. Board of Health, and I've given you my response package to that. We got down to basically the three poles.
Before we leave comments, come.
Oh, sure.
So it sounds like if they were here, and they're not, you and they would say, "ZBA, please adopt the order of conditions and those plans and integrate them into ZBA's decision, and everyone will be happy."
Yes, yes, yes.
When were we, when, when were we?
They, well, so Hillary was putting that together. She kind of came to the meeting with the order. I had hoped to get it already by Nina, but I didn't get it.
It's quite a rough draft, and you won't be able to see it.
Yeah, I would say to you that they have three weeks to issue. Basically, we did everything at the same meeting. We just don't have the document yet. Wear that close. For Board of Health, Mark Oring was kind to get a review done, knowing that we had our meeting this evening, so I commend him for finding time to do that. We got the package to them on Conservation on Wednesday evening last week, so we brought it in that night. So they had the same revision that the Conservation Commission had through the 419 date. Excuse me, I messed up. The 410 date. So we went ahead and made revisions to date to address Board of Health. So I'm going to focus on those.
So there will be, there will be, there will be a 419 set.
Yes, and that, and we, and so just for continuity, and because it's so much easier for you folks to say that's the plan set, we changed all the sheets, even though only four sheets get affected by the things that we had to do for Board of Health. The Conservation Commission's order will reference the earlier plan. The changes that I'm making are very specific to the septic system and that components of that, they're all outside the buffer zone, so we're going off.
And a moron, say, a moron lawyer reading the plans would be able to figure that out pretty quickly.
It's because it's a paper trail. I mean, that's the thing about all of this, is that everything just comes together.
You love our paper trails.
Right, right. So the first point was where we had some disconnect.
I didn't mean you, I meant.
That's how I understood it. Good observation, Kelly. Isn't that what you're supposed to say? So the items that were in the Board of Health, Section C, Items 11 and 12, pertain to setbacks. And what we had done to address that point was created an entirely new sheet. I was still concerned that part of Mr. Oring's comments were, you know, normally when you have a project, you have a house, and you would show a tie distance to this lot line, to the front lot line, to the rear lot line, to the side lot line, and do the same thing for your soil absorption system. It's great when you have one house and one soil absorption.
It's a little busy on your plan.
When you've got 12 units to do, I had just said, "Look, I can do this physically. You're just going to get a spaghetti mess, but if you insist, I'll do it." He, he, you know, understood. We put the setbacks where they made sense. You know, let's tie down those that are closest. Everywhere the closest unit was, we put it in. Where we had the other ties, we put it in, and then we have our overall zoning setback that's on the plan. So he agreed with that format. That we've put it here, we've shown all the meets and balances of the entire property, all on one piece of, one piece of paper, if you will, and then the locust map. They want that specifically to scale as part of their requirement. We had a locust, wasn't to that scale. So we just, again, when you try not to ask for any waivers, we want to do everything right on point.
So you put that little logo on there?
The little locust right there.
Okay, got it.
Is that, Peter, is that sheet three?
It is, yeah. Three of three of those soil absorptions, so what we have is a plan categories, if you will, but they're all referenced in the cover sheet. We've got our plan set that gets us through our kind of zoning wood site plan component. We have the plans that are specific for the soil absorption system. We have the architectural stuff that Vince done.
Yeah, okay. I had a question. I know you had put forth the idea that there would be no sidewalks and pretty much accepted that, except I'm concerned about the entrance. And when somebody comes walking down the street, and if they want to get onto the street sidewalk, it's pretty tight there because it's a one-way 14-foot. And I just make reference to another project that we had reviewed, which we had that discussion, and they did have, you know, from the, from the loop around to the street, they put in a sidewalk. And I think it would be a good idea to do that.
Those fields, you think?
The fields, yeah.
So you're saying right here on both sides of this?
Well, I was thinking you could get away with one side, but it doesn't really work. Yeah, both sides, just, you know, from a point where it's comfortable, you know, walking in the street. So maybe just around the curve or something like that.
Well, I bring it up to the kiosk here for this side. That's, that's a given.
And then the next question is, what, the lettering on my copy of whatever that object is there is not clear. Can you explain to me what that is?
The kiosk?
What is the kiosk?
That's, so the community?
Mailboxes.
Here with the mailboxes will be.
It's a mailbox.
There'll be like a posting, so there was like an event or something. It would be, you know, a place for someone to put something and say.
And then another drawing shows, another, shows a gazebo directly across.
That's Stephen, did that carry forth, and did you want to continue to do that? We eliminated it some time ago. There was a plan that showed it.
Yeah, well, it's on the set I have, which is the fourth.
I might still be on Stephen's.
Well, well, given the fact that the, you know, this, this little structure is right up front, I wonder if you had a design for it yet.
Yeah, no, we don't want to do the gazebo. I kind of saw that from.
So the gazebo's.
So you don't need to see it. And I'll, and I'll make sure it's off all the plans.
But the other structure that you.
The kiosk.
The kiosk.
I don't really have anything on that.
You're going to show us a design at some point? I mean, it's right up front.
If you'd like, I mean, I'm happy with the condition that says that little semite.
Yeah.
Because, no, you're absolutely right. That's very visible from the street.
Right.
And we don't want just some, I don't know if you've seen these mailboxes on the pedestal?
No, I know.
Now, this is going to have a shed around it with a little roof, so that when people are there, especially if it's raining, they're not getting rain going.
Right.
So it's going to be attractive structure, but we don't have that designed.
Do you have a, you have a 30,000 gallon tank there?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Which your fire chief wants and.
That's for.
It's really for not just this project, in my estimation, when he asked for it, because it's a substantial volume. Yes, it's for the fire department. So what you, you know, we offered one to start with, which would have been for the project. At 30,000, you know, these would all be engulfed, and you could be fighting.
It's in a wall, below grade?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, you wouldn't be able to see it.
Yeah, I mean, that's what we have out in front of this building here.
Yeah, and you have them around, you don't have fire hydrants anyway, so that's why I said, "I think your fire department thought, here's a good opportunity to put one in for a community north Main Street, you know, so if there's a fire down the road, they would come here and take our water to go fight that fire." I get it.
Yeah, actually, since the last meeting, we've started, Peter, you don't know this yet, we've started bidding out all the site work, which includes that sister, that's now 30,000 gallons, and it's a little bit of a budget bust-up for us. I thought it was going to be something like $50,000. It's $120,000.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, yeah, I just found that out today. So we spoke to Chief Kenny a couple of times, and originally, I think it was 15,000 gallons.
10 and 50 is more than enough.
Right.
That seems more in proportion to the project.
Right, and then we were getting close to the, what I thought was the end of our hearings here, and I talked to him, no, actually, he called me, because if you know, there's a condition in here that says that we, before we get building permits, we need to get a letter from the fire chief. And I haven't gone to him yet because, just in case, there's still a change, I want him to see the final, final site plan, which would now change a little bit. We put that little cobblestone at grade at the entrance. So anyways, he had called me and said that he had just been to some kind of a fire chief seminar, and they're now saying that 30,000 gallons is what we need. So I think, like, a day before, we were making some changes to come in here. We put it in there, but now having seen the price of it, and we still have a condition in here that says that I need to get him his final sign off, thinking I can go back to him and possibly come up with another option that would satisfy his needs, but not provide water for the entire North Main Street. If you and the chief come to agreement on something, we're likely to go along with that.
Right.
I think it's the sense of the board. And if you can't, then we'll have to decide.
Yeah, I'm just a little concerned because right now it says 30 in there, but if, if that can be still left to be worked out, as long as the.
Are we locked in on 30 if the chief says 20 is enough?
No, not at all.
No, I'm not locked in.
All right, I'm inclined to defer to what the chief says.
Yep.
Other than reading.
Yep. Good. So that was getting back to the structure, so we're good with that. And then sidewalks, I'll figure something out, and I would roll that into the same revision date, okay? We haven't, so these were the, all the sheets are going to get revised through the 19th. I will just make that change as part.
Okay. Will there be sort of a list that sort of says what the changes are, just in very short and air-to-form, like bullet points, just so that we can?
I can do that a couple of ways.
Yeah, just if someone says, "Well, what the heck are the differences with the 410 plan?"
Okay, okay. So, Fee, I just want you to see the detail, and then I'll pertain to the Board of Health, because I want you to be comfortable with, you know, potentially the condition that we are here. So what Mr. Oring had agreed to was that that plan that I was showing you was going to be adequate, and so that's why it says, "No further response required." To me, that item's closed out. We provided him with what he wanted. He agrees with what we presented, so we're settled with that. Obviously, the last item here is, Mr. Oring also identified the fact that the board approves the plan at a regularly scheduled meeting. He does not. He'll make a recommendation to the board. If, that's in his letter, not my letter.
Right, no, no, but, but what did you do with him on Section G?
I'm going to go beyond, I'm just, I don't, I was getting a little bit ahead of myself.
I see, okay.
I want you to know that no matter what, I still have to go before the board with all this to get a permit.
Right.
So even though we have, I think I've addressed everything.
And so if his board doubles back on him, they'll be a surprise, okay?
Yeah, it would be a surprise to me, only because I think the form is very thorough.
Right, right, okay, that's right.
Okay. So the Section G, Items 6 and 8, that's where we have an extensive amount of work to do because what, and I've done it. So I want you to understand what we did. I've done a lot of sewers in my day. I mean, when you do a municipal sewer line, you have services that come into the sewer. Well, that's what he wanted. So if you look very closely at this sheet, I actually show all 12 units coming into the system in the profile. So by station, particularly station 54383, elevation 16598, Unit 3, that's how it's going to tie in with its six-inch main into my eight-inch trunk, all right? And then I did that for every single unit. I've never done this before, but where there's a will, there's a way. God'll let you do it.
And, and if there's a question later about whether it was built right, it'll be.
Well, I was just going to say, the contractor's going to look at this, and Vin gives it to us, and he's going to say, "What?" Because nobody ever does what I've done here. They're going to get it close to where we show it, because they're going to go along. You put the Y in, and it tends to be where it's nice and convenient, not necessarily going to cut a piece of pipe and put it down to the station to the 100. We don't do it yet. So I'm just letting you know that I have the ability to calculate it. Doesn't mean nobody's going to go with it. So that's been done on the profile. But are we required to build that way once you put it on a land?
Yeah, I think we are. Within reason, maybe. To a hundredth of an inch, no, but they better not, you know, if it's supposed to be here, it better not be a foot away.
That's what I'm just saying, is if this, the plan is telling them how to do it.
Right, reject. Are you saying that there's a line from each?
It's up to the granite slopes, it really doesn't matter.
No, no, it goes up to the street, and then it go, okay. Nothing's changed from your perspective. I'm just saying to you that I'm telling the contractor how to tie your shoes.
Okay.
So there's also a note on here that indicates that every six-inch service connection will also be laid at 2% versus, they're not going in and trying to identify every single one of them and then have a bit different slope on every one of them, but this is a no. We're going to make them all 2%. That way, again, it's cut, dry, and there's uniformity, and then we know we've got enough velocity, and we know we've got proper pitch. So that's the other thing. That note repeats itself, so that the two plans tie together, so again, it says the same thing at the bottom here. And then if you go to every single unit, we identify the invert, it will be at the building, and then we identify a cleanout just outside the building. It's one thing Walter didn't have on the plan. From my perspective, I'm a gravity sewer line until I get here to that septic tank.
Right.
That's when I become a septic system.
Right.
But to me, this all needs to look like a gravity sewer line until you get to there.
Right.
Sometimes when we do our gravity sewer line, you know, when we do our septic systems, we don't put cleanouts in. We've got a septic tank, we've got places to clean things out. Just a difference. So that had added to the plan, and then there was a note that, again, tied those two things together on the sheets. And then the last item that Mr. Oring brought up was Section M, 18, 19, and 20, and that is with our relationship to our pump system. And the local Board of Health has a five-foot-per-second requirement, minimum requirement for the velocity for the pump, and the one that we had specified was 2.1. So I was like, "Okay, good." So, but then when you go to the next unit, you get a lot more velocity, which is fine, but with velocity, you also get friction. So it changes some of the parameters on what we did, which is all fine. So I've documented that. We have our two alternating pumps. Instead of being a 0.4 horsepower, we go to a half horsepower. Instead of, I think it was 17, fully dynamic head, now we're 27. We're pumping at 56 gallons per minute. The pumps have a 5.73 foot-per-second velocity, and the runtime for each dial is 8.35, pumping 468 gallons per cycle. And all of that's also documented on the plans now. So that's how we address Board of Health requirements.
So if Mark were here, in theory, he'd say, "Yeah, that's exactly what I asked for."
Exactly, exactly. So we'll, we'll go, we'll finish this up, we'll make the other edits, we'll plan to appear at the next Board of Health meeting to get the soil absorption systems approved. And then on the, on the well, the only thing that we had disconnected on was the polyween was still something we would need to retest. We will find, you know, we're fine with doing that. I think at the end of this cycle of bringing things up to, to requirements, we'll be able to satisfy that. The one that I still want to talk about was the testing protocol that they had, only because, again, Vin's having budget problems already with the system component. We were talking about, we thought we'd be testing the wells and then testing the lines, if you will, for bacterial content. We want to make sure that the whole system is satisfied there. But we're also running an entire battery of quality at every single tap in each residence. Because that's in the requirements.
It just seems, I mean, I've never seen that before.
That we have to do it every time. So that was the one thing we still had out there, if you recall.
So are you saying, I'm not sure I understand the objection, which is, are you objecting to testing at every single tap, or are you objecting to multiple tests of each tap?
No, well, I'm only, I'm not objecting to the testing at each tap because to test them for chloroform, you know, for bacteria, it makes perfect sense to me. We should do that. But it was to test the quality so to get the constituents of what's coming through the water system from the well. We've tested that, and I don't mind testing again that once. But once it gets into the water distribution system, why is that quality going to change to 12 residences? And what we're being asked to do is to do the full battery of tests at every tap.
If Oring were here, would he say the answer to that is, and as you know, I'm not an engineer, and this'll prove it, to make sure that there aren't contaminants introduced in the build-out of the rest of the system?
Yeah, I think.
After the water gets out of the ground?
Sure, it would make some sense, but we're using the normal standardized materials for water distribution systems. They're not going to introduce like a heavy metal or arsenic or something like that. Do you follow me? Those things are the variables that come from that water column in the well. So once you've tested, once you've tested your volume of water, you know, from what is going to yield from your well, and it goes into the system, it's not going to be different at every tap because it goes through that pipe.
So maybe, maybe you're going to wind up asking for a waiver of that from us.
That's the one thing that I think is still on the table for us to ask for a waiver on. I just wanted you to be aware of that.
Fair warning.
The chair was pretty, she made a point, is that that's our requirement, and I don't disagree. It is their requirement. I'm just telling you that that's a humorous one for Vin, because we're talking about, like, at this point, the testing we did was a little over $1,000. So if we're going to do that 12 times, it's $12,000 in just water testing.
Okay, well. But we're not doing a bacteria test.
Yeah, we're not, you're not trying to get out of the norm, the things you conventionally expect to do.
Right, so run it to, run it to the end of its course of its discussions with the Board of Health, and then they'll make their case, and you'll make your case, and.
You'll have to.
We'll listen to everybody.
Right. Yeah, the only thing, just, is this delaying everything? No, well, so, okay, so now, this is, so this is why we've been coming here tonight. What am I hoping to accomplish? We were hoping to get a conditional approval, because I know Bill and Thomas, I hope he has to be. Did we hear that?
I did not hear that, although I hope.
Well, I hope he did. So this was John Gelsich. So his, he had given you a draft decision.
Correct.
And, I don't know, having read through it, I, you know, didn't find anything that was extraordinary to me, my way of thinking in which you'd have for a project at this scale and scope. So we were hoping to try to get down to a decision with requisite conditions to satisfy and advance the project.
And you have anything else to say?
I don't anymore. I'll sit on.
Okay.
I just said, I just said a little, Peter, I just had a little question on the lighting.
Sure.
It looks like, am I looking at a photometric form?
We did provide one at earlier stage.
But I couldn't, I couldn't, I couldn't see the location of the actual fixtures.
So they were distributed through the site. But I don't know if that, because I provided you with that so, so long ago. I think I've stopped printing the photo, the numbers part of it. This would be the last one I have.
Is this the place where the fixtures would be shown?
It's, yes, it identifies where they're shown.
I mean, my, my drawing's pretty small, so.
Yeah, so I can point them out to you, because they are here, and they're in AutoCAD. So there's, there's one here, there's one here, here, here.
You probably just can't see them on the reduction.
I, I could shut the photometric off, and, but they are there.
Oh, okay.
And then don't forget, each unit will have a porch associated with it, so there's going to be socket lights, and then there's, did you have a wall lantern too, Vin? You didn't put those between the doors?
No.
No, no wall lanterns at the doors, okay.
Oh, there'd be a.
Oh.
At the door?
Yeah.
Yeah, right next to the front door, yes, and then garage.
It's the garage, yeah, so you are going to have lanterns. Okay, yeah, and then.
And I believe this, I'm going to say this, maybe seven lanterns around the site. The idea is not to light it up like a shopping center parking lot. It's to provide dim lighting. It probably doesn't meet any photometric requirements that you normally have for public spaces.
I mean, if you believe the drawing, there's no light spilling off onto the adjacent property.
No, that, that is true, for sure. I can assure you of that, because that's the design that we did. And what, what Vin's saying is that we try to always, like, have a minimum of one-foot handle.
Yeah.
And any walking pathway.
Yeah.
And we're not trying to do that here. This is a residential neighborhood, these are, you know, homes, and we're putting in enough light to make it safe and secure.
Yeah.
But we're not trying to light it up like a commercial parking lot.
And how tall are the posts?
No, higher than 12 feet.
So that, that would be the post to the fixture or the total height?
Actually, I know you really like the looks of things, so that lantern is not what I envisioned, or that's what I envisioned.
Oh, okay.
And so the top of the crook's 12 feet? Yes.
So the very top of it?
The very top.
Okay.
So it's, it's more residential feeling and not like.
Can I see that?
Yeah.
Yep.
That's good. There was no, there's no uplight, no skylight.
No uplight, it's definitely down. That's definitely how we've done it. Vin, if you want, I'll just take that and put that on, so that.
Yeah, because having that one there is distracting. Someone might take a shine to it, so to speak.
Right, right.
And.
And my only, my final question about the site was, the cover has a sheet index?
Yes.
And it shows landscape plans? I don't have any.
Okay, well, they, they do exist. Those were done by Steve Cosmo, and he would have them here with me.
I don't know if I just didn't print them out, or.
I'd be happy to give you the two full-size ones that I have in my set.
Oh, okay, all right.
But that's, this was his designs, typical around the unit, and then with the whole place on the report.
Uh huh. Uh-huh.
I can distribute those again.
Okay.
By email?
Yeah, that would be good, if you could shoot out an email. I don't know if either of you seeing, remember seeing the landscape?
I'd have to refresh my recollection, I've got a bunch of plans.
We had autumn maple, October maples, green mountain sugar maples.
Right, I remember looking at that, and I remember there was all the talk about trying to save the one big tree out front, but by the time you put everything underground, you couldn't do it.
Exactly.
There wasn't any room for its, yeah.
And it's hit its end.
I regretted to agree with you on that one.
Just getting a new tree there, let it grow, the project.
It's possible that the drawings I have are maybe just the ones that were updated or something.
Could be.
What's the date on those pieces?
Eleven, seven, seventeen, was when Steven did these.
I suspect that's what happened, I probably have one somewhere.
It's on the website?
Yeah, it's on the website.
On the website? Oh, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, good.
All right, well, maybe it's good then to take a second and sort of review where we are in the process. The hearing's still open, I think that's probably a good idea to have the hearing still open, in case, you know, there's some tweak to the plans, or somebody shows up, or whatever. I know I've taken, I've had, spent a little bit of time, but not much time at all, with John's draft, and I think all of us need to spend a fair amount of time looking at that carefully, and looking at our decision in the fields, and sort of comparing, although I think, I think he used the fields as a model, 'cause I know he wanted some stuff from Barbara. The last time we talked about which way to go on this, the sense of the board, so to speak, an informal discussion, not a formal goal, was to, people were inclined to grant with conditions, how do people feel now? The same, different?
The same, yeah, I feel the same.
Jonathan?
Yes, I also feel that we should grant a project with conditions.
Right. I'm not sure I'm comfortable granting the permit tonight with conditions, just 'cause we don't have the detail behind it, fully, fully fleshed out, but I don't think our sense and direction have changed a bit, if I'm reading my colleagues correctly.
No, please, the applicant is done.
Yep, it's fabulous. Right now, the hearing is open till when, Genie? Thirty of April?
Thirty, thirty first.
April thirty. Well, if it's the thirty-first of April, it'll be the first one.
Sorry.
So, whether we leave the hearing open or close it, is a technicality, it seems to me that we need to do is turn to the work of drafting, and actually knocking out all the puzzle parts. I don't, have you guys spent enough time with it that you're willing to start chewing on it tonight? 'Cause I, I have not. What I was gonna suggest was that we.
I mean, I've read through it, but I haven't really.
I think what I might suggest is, send us by email, your latest and most detailed set of plans, and then we'll blow them off and print them the way we want, and I think each of us should sit back down with the, with the decision and come back here with a markup that we can share with each other. I think, I think on the most recent open meeting law decision, we probably shouldn't be sharing those markups with each other in advance.
Right.
'Cause that'll look like we're putting the rabbit in the hat.
Right.
Which is not allowed, and which was never allowed, and that was always a former town council, St. Andres position, and the Supreme Judicial Court just reaffirmed. I guess that would be my next, my next step.
Well, then, when would we be, when would we be coming back and doing that?
That is the very next question, which is, when could we next come back and talk about that?
Well, I'm.
These guys would like it to be tomorrow morning.
Yeah, we wanna keep moving, Vin wants to be in the ground, and our swap actually anticipated being in the ground, so.
Right, right, right.
Okay, well. I am available, you know, any night next week, and then I'm going to California this following week, the entire week.
I'm only available on Monday and Tuesday.
Monday and Tuesday of next week.
Twenty-third or twenty-fourth.
So we could come back.
I'm available on the thirtieth.
Yes, on Monday night, but you're in California on the thirtieth.
Yes, I'm not available on the thirtieth.
All right, so we could meet again on the, on the twenty, Tuesday the twenty-fourth?
Yeah.
Work for you?
Yes.
Okay, and let's each bring a markup, so that hopefully we can leave with some consolidated thing, and even if we can't finish the markup, then we can have a, have a good sense.
I agree.
I think John gave us a good start, but I don't think we can quite just sign it.
Isn't that town meeting?
No, the twenty-sixth, oh, twenty-sixth, Thursday the twenty-sixth, Tuesday the twenty- Let's not have it on town meeting now, let's not do that.
I wouldn't mind having.
Yeah, 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 yeah. How about Monday night the twenty-third then, instead?
That's okay with me.
I think that's our only.
All right.
I have something.
You may not have to be here.
I.
Yes?
We're continuing with the meeting?
Yes.
That it doesn't have to be posted within forty-eight hours?
You're saying because tonight's the nineteenth?
Saturday Sunday doesn't count.
I think we do have to post, it's a, it's a public meeting, so I think we do have to have posted it, we don't have to have done a long, you know.
Yeah.
And what is, what about the twenty-fifth, which is Wednesday, you can't do?
I'm gone. I leave Wednesday morning.
And when do you come back?
Friday night.
So that's no good, and then you're gone the entire next week.
Yeah, I mean, the, I have a seventy-five-page brief due on the twenty-fourth, so I was about to suggest, starting early.
Ahead of, ahead of town meeting?
Maybe five o'clock.
I mean, I could do that, if you two could do it, I could meet it.
That would help me, 'cause I would have a meeting that night, so I can, I could do, you know, earlier's better, because no one's gonna meet that early.
Five o'clock on the twenty-fourth?
Yeah. I think that's probably our only alternative.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Well, I've got some clients that won't like that very much, but let me see what I can do to work around it. All they do is pay me, and I agree, I don't get paid to do this, so that, wait a minute.
No, I understand that one, I very much understand that.
But, but, Genie, right, you gotta.
It's not a good time for me either.
We gotta post it, all right, so how about a working session here, a continuation of the hearing, but we intend to treat it as a working session, five o'clock on the twenty-fourth.
Very good.
And, you know, we may not be able to wrap up, but at least we'll know where we are.
I wonder if John is gonna do it like that?
I don't know. Genie, can you reach out to John and find out his status? Hopefully it's joyous, but whatever his availability is, it would be nice to have him help us with the drafting.
Seven o'clock here, at five, five o'clock.
Well, let's find out what his schedule is, if he could do that, that'd be great.
Okay.
Does anybody know offhand what the yellowed material is in the draft? Are these provisions he's highlighting for us?
What page do you have in your draft?
On March thirtieth?
Yeah.
Draft session.
Yeah, my printed-out copy doesn't have any, no.
Well, there's some obvious places where it just says "add as necessary," but overrun numbered paragraphs ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen. For example, local preferences in paragraph fourteen.
Right, I wonder if maybe he was trying to flag things for Gino. Well, Genie, that's a, that's a good, you know, to the extent you can reach John and find out if he's available, you could also ask, what was the, what was the intent of the highlighting? And let's see, here's.
It doesn't have to do with the affordable units, so I think he just might have a question as to whether the exact same provisions for the affordable units from whatever agreement he pulled us out.
Right.
Apply to this project.
Right. Let's see if he says here.
Well, there's, example in paragraph ten, the preference category for Sherburn residence and their parents and children who have resided in Sherburn within two years immediately preceding their application for housing, and for employees of the town of Sherburn in the initial sales of the units.
Right.
Now, I don't know where those policy statements come from.
Well, I think it is a, I know it's something they've been working on, because they sent me some materials on how they'd have it administered, and they were having the administration done by the town of Sudbury, I think, right?
That was, yeah, that's for the fields.
That's for the fields, but aren't they gonna use the same local preference attempts and rules?
Yeah.
For this one?
I would, I would think, but I don't know who is gonna be doing work with this project.
Okay.
But Gino did write the local preference letter.
For the fields?
For the fields, so I'm assuming he would, and he did it also for Whitney, so I'm assuming he would do it again for the.
All right, so if you can ask Gino, and to the extent you can reach him, John.
Yep.
Maybe they can get us some guidance on that, just so we can narrow it down, get it a little more finely tuned.
Okay.
Ron, I'll expect you to continue to sort of be our point man on plan review and architectural and things like that, not that John and I don't have eyes, but you're more trained in that area. Where's the words tend to be, are, be a little?
Sometimes the words don't come.
Sometimes they don't, sometimes they don't.
So we're good with our plan set the way we've done it, it goes through the index sheet, the soil absorption plans, I can make, Steven's plans are rolled in there, they have a landscape plan, but I have no architectural plans in my set, they'll stand alone.
Right.
So we're good with that scenario.
Right, but what you'll, what you'll want to say is, because we went round and round on this with the fields, and there were a whole bunch of different people, there was finally, I think, in the, and now, I think the documents on the fields are in the public domain, because I know the town council shared them with your opposing council, so you can see those, and there was like an index set of, you know, these ten plans from this guy, and these ten plans from this guy, and these five plans from this guy, and that is the plan set.
Got it.
So an index, you know, sort of a master index sheet, and that way, nobody could fight later.
Right.
And I assume that works for you, and that would work for us, 'cause it would minimize squabbles.
I guess Larry's been issuing his plans through Vin, and I don't, I don't have them in my set, we've shared things, so I make sure that it fits, but I've not done anything with them.
Our goal is a paper trail, whether or not it's on paper.
Absolutely.
Okay, well, I had some markers, I know, like, I remember there being something in here for provision for a bus stop, and, you know, we are age-restricted, so I don't think we need a bus stop here, but I remember we pulled.
Might be a different type of bus.
Right. Different kind of bus, it wasn't that kind of bus, that was a school bus. But I'm just saying that there was, you know, I'll come with my markup, so we can start, you know, crossing some things off or.
Well, if you have markup suggestions in advance, you could email them to us, that's not.
Okay, fine, all right.
Yeah, or you send them to Genie, and Genie can send them to us.
Okay, okay.
That would be helpful.
All right.
We can't discuss them amongst ourselves.
No, I understand, you can exchange information amongst yourselves, right.
We're allowed to transmit information from third parties, such as yourself, and I encourage that, because that just gets more people ramped up faster.
So the architectural plans, the four sheets we have, is that pretty much the extent of it? Yeah, we do have the sheet which correlates the.
Right, starts the locations.
Yeah.
That is it.
Okay.
Yeah. I think John mentioned at the last term, he said that as a 40D conceptual plans is all we're requiring to provide, so I know it's probably not as in-depth as you might have seen on, you know, like a subdivision or something, but it's.
Oh, I think it's adequate.
It's cost me a lot of money, just the way it is.
Well, it's adequate.
Yeah.
I just.
I hope you're not looking at mine and saying "adequate," I know I put a lot, a lot more detail into these plans than I thought I was gonna have. Architecturally, I was, you can say a little about Larry's plan.
Speaking of the architect.
You're saying wicked adequate.
Thank you, wicked adequate, I'll take that, thank you.
Yeah, it's actually really bad.
So I entertain a motion to continue to Tuesday the twenty-fourth, five o'clock here.
Yes, I so moved that we continue this hearing till next Tuesday at five P.M.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, spirited debate, dissents, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Nay? Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.